Thanks for coming, everyone. We will start with the prayer followed by the pledge of allegiance and the roll call. Dear wise and loving Father, thank you on behalf of all who are gathered here today. Thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work and for the honor of serving the community. We pray that you oversee the safety of our village employees and volunteers as they do their jobs. Bless our residents with safe neighborhoods, good jobs, and a great quality of life. We thank you for those people who are invested in the well-being of our community in various manners. We pray for protection of our military personnel and their families, especially those that were injured and lost their lives during the recent events. It is in your most blessed name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks for coming, everyone. Roll call, please.
Baker.
Here.
Bassett.
Here.
Beverly.
Yep.
Jones.
Here.
Hedley.
Here.
Barth.
Here.
Thank you. You have in your council packets the June 15 regular council meeting minutes for approval.
I'll move the approval there.
I'll second that.
Roll call, please.
Barth.
Yes.
Hedley.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Beverly.
Yes.
Bassett.
Yes.
Baker.
Yep.
You have in your packet the June 12 special council meeting minutes.
I would make a motion to approve those.
I need to just ask if, I was asking Dawn about this today. At this meeting when we discussed hiring an EMT and a fire chief, I thought that I stated that if we needed to hire a full-time, I mean another EMT and we needed a chief, that we combine the positions into one and the chief run as an EMT. No, I didn't say that?
Not as one.
No.
Okay, all right. I just wanted to make sure that, I know I had said it to several people, I just didn't know if I said it in the meeting, it needed to be in the minutes. Okay. Are there any corrections or additions in?
I would make the motion to approve.
Okay.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Baker.
Yes.
Bassett.
Yes.
Beverly.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Hedley.
Yes.
Barth.
Yes.
Okay.
Do you have the bills in your packet? Are there any questions?
The CSX transportation application. That's to have them look at the plans to bore under the North Main Viaduct as part of that waterline project.
Oh. Plus that must just for application, huh?
Yeah, that's probably not the last.
That's the beginning, yeah.
Once they approve it, so.
Even though you're out in the roadway, you still...
We're on underneath their property, so.
Okay, I'm just curious, huh?
A bore can't be an open cut.
You gotta get their permission either way.
Are we shooting for an open cut?
No, we're hoping to bore it, but we'll find out.
Since, real quick, just nothing about the bills. Since they're gonna be in town, or when they're in town, you think they can inspect out there the creek behind the cemetery, they get plugs up all the time? Because we would really like them to change that whole culvert system underneath there, but I'm just saying if they were in...
CSX?
Yeah. We've asked them before to clean it out, and they've done it like a year or two ago, but I'm sure it's impacted again.
I have no idea who I'd even call. They won't be coming to town to look at anything. They're doing this all from forward.
Oh, it's all paperwork.
If you talk to Jason Rory, maybe he's got a contact, because I don't know who came up the last time when they were back there.
District manager, I think.
I was thinking he contacted.
I have a CSX contact.
Okay.
It's probably only public relations, but, I don't know.
No further questions, I move the bills.
I'll second that.
Roll call, please.
Baker.
Yes.
Bassett.
Yes.
Beverly.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Hedley.
Yes.
Barth.
I'm staying.
Thank you. We're moving on the agenda to boards and commissions. You have in your packet minutes from the June 5 beautification meeting. There's no one here to answer questions you may have. We also, then going on down to the council committee reports, we have a water sewer refuge committee meeting minutes from June 7. Do you have any, do you want to make any comments about that, Mike?
Okay, we had a good meeting. He asked us to take a look at the garbage service that we have currently in town, and of course, got two proposals. We really like the, gee whiz, I'm at a loss.
Worler.
Worl, it works, the gentleman's last name is Worl, Casey Worl, that's the president. Worler came in with a really decent proposal. We'd like everyone in council to take a look at it with their services, recycling, their weekly pickup, and then their, they had two general pickup options. But they do have the contract in the packets, I believe, tonight, for everyone to kind of read through them for our next, maybe bring in or anybody have a discussion on it once we can meet next time after you read the total proposal for the packets.
Just since you're on that, if you'd want to touch on the next meeting, because I was gonna have Casey come, but if there's not gonna be enough people here on the 3rd, I'd probably, we'd need to wait till the 17th to have him come for questions.
I would agree.
If everybody's okay with that, just so I know what to pass on to.
So you're gonna have him come on the 17th?
Yeah, I mean, that'd be the next one after the 3rd, so.
Okay.
You're gonna be a big shortage on the 3rd, you think? You're seeing one coming up?
I know at least two weren't gonna be here, that's why I thought I'd bring them. Three won't be here, so we might not even be meeting on the 3rd. You might need to find that out, if we're gonna be missing three.
I knew about Mike, I knew about Ron, who else?
Eric.
And Eric, okay. Well, I don't think we can really take care of any business with that many.
I'm going on vacation, too.
Maybe we can meet the 5th, day, next day.
I won't be back yet.
Will you be back the 5th? Yeah, I will be.
Okay. Can you make the 5th? Everybody else make the 5th Wednesday?
Okay, so do you want him to come on?
Yeah, let's have Casey, I think...
Yeah, let's get it rolling.
Like I said, what they do for other towns and with their recycling, their general pickup and their regular pickup, I think it's working for a lot of communities and it's cost-effective, so I think it'll work out nice.
I would suggest you bring these papers back with you at your next meeting, the Worler stuff. Okay, anything else?
Oh, we're still working on the meeting with the EPA in regards to meeting with Andy. I think we finally have a date set July 12. Sounds like it's gonna work us for this up there.
Yeah, possibly. Keeps getting pushed back and back and back.
But right now, that's a tentative meeting, and I know during the meeting, you know, we've been talking about the water tower and we have a Pogomire thing we need to address, but the, we're also looking for additional land for the, a well, for future expansion of our wells there at the park, and it needs to tie into our current system and everything. So we got, between the tower and the well, that's two things that we're looking at for future needs of the community. We wanna stay ahead of the game and not be reactive if something happens in the future, so. Anybody have any questions?
I guess, since, since we're there, you'll see me bringing up, leave it, on the, on the Pogomire proposal, the committee asked them to resubmit, so that's why you've got stuff to look at now. And I can ask Troy to bring the legislation on the 5th unless you talk about it tonight and nobody wants to do it, period. That's sort of the plan at this point. So I give you a couple weeks to look it over.
So they're saying that $75,600 plus the $72.50 for them will take care of both, both phases, right?
Yeah, that's 70...
Except for the fact that, it tells right underneath there, it says that anything that's not in their basis is gonna be at current hourly rate scheduled. If you go back to exhibit A, number 3, they're gonna charge you for everything. So the only thing that $75,000 is, is a place to start. They need to tie it down to a number.
Well, the contractual sign's gonna be for the 7th, and you're gonna round it off, 80, whatever that number is.
But...
Every, every engineering contract you have always has, if there's additional, you're gonna pay the hour.
I understand that, but they have everything listed as in additionals.
Now, if you go back to exhibit C, page 5, Ron, they have the, Phase 1, they don't have broken down anything more, but Phase 2, they have all the topographical survey, design, bidding assistance, engineering during construction.
Yeah, I mean, that's what you're getting for a $75,000.
That's where, that's how they're getting the $75,600, is adding those things up.
Right.
Yeah, so that's covering the design.
Never mind, never mind. You're not following me, that's fine.
Ken, what are you hoping to find out in two weeks that you can't find out tonight?
Well, I didn't think anybody'd be ready to vote on anything tonight. I fear they'd at least want to read through the, well, yeah. I fear this, since they just got it in their packets, they can, they can wait till the 5th, I guess people...
I figured they read it before they got here and would be ready to discuss it, but if you want to give them two more weeks, go ahead.
I didn't want to assume that, and we didn't have time to look at it.
All right.
So that's why everybody's got time, we can wait two weeks.
Then you're gonna have Troy bring legislation at the same time?
Yeah, might as well. I mean, that way there's discussion or whatever, then he can vote and...
And that was a plan from the committee, is to present their proposal, full-blown proposal, and then have everybody read it and then bring back legislation.
Good. All right. Anything else?
That's it.
Are there any other committees of council that has anything to report? Committee chairs? All right. We are on the administrator's report.
Before I forget, I'll let Jeff ask council something, tell me what my stuff...
In August, there's another, there's a training class that I'd like to take, prepare to take my level 3, level 3 test. Yeah, the class starts end of, in mid-August, 14-week class. So I'd like permission to apply for that. Go to that class.
Council's supposed to get their blessing before anybody goes to school.
Do we need a 3?
Bring it down.
Right now, no, but if anything comes down in the future, I'd rather have it, and that's why there's no, there's no rush, you know, with a deadline, I'd rather have it and...
I'm pretty, I'm pretty sure if we would end up with that dopey vortex, at the end of all of this, we'd become a Class 3. I'm hoping we avoid it, but I don't want to wait till the last minute either.
Yeah, that's why I don't want to wait till the last minute either, I'd rather start working on it now and...
You say it's 14 weeks?
It's 14, 14-week class.
Is it in the evenings?
Yeah, it's, well, there's a class I'd like to take in Perry'sburg, it meets every Wednesday from 5 to 8. So hopefully I get into that one, if not, the next closest one's in Dayton, and it's from 2 to 4.
You could go to Perry'sburg.
Hopefully I get into Perry'sburg and...
Ken, is there any stipulation about passing the class or getting the license as to whether we pay for it or not? Do we pay for it regardless, just by signing it? I really don't remember that.
I got three chances. I think I got one.
Yeah, I think we get the three, yeah.
Well, that's, that's a state, that's a state test, the class.
Yeah, this is against the class.
If you pass, you're paid.
But council still has to give them, if, I forget how the exhort, ordinance is exactly stated, council has to give their blessing to take classes.
You don't plan on leaving, are you?
(laughing).
So what's the class cost?
Well, next time I go, I'll be out to Smith Brown.
I think he said 635.
I think we should bless it.
Yes, I'll second that.
Roll call, please.
Baker.
Yes.
Bassett.
Yes.
Beverly.
Yes.
Barth.
Yes.
Jones.
Hedley. Yes.
How about Austin, how's Ted, done his?
I think he's gonna take his test, or try to take his test next month. He's studying, he's still studying on that. He's done the, the classwork, classroom work, and he's just doing some study and take the test.
Did he pass his classroom work?
Yeah, he passed the classroom, so he's just getting ready to take the ABC test now.
That's positive.
Okay. Biggest thing I want to get out to the public, because people have been calling, I've had flyers laying out here at City Hall, I think it got put on our website, but trash during the week of July 4th, with the holiday falling on a Tuesday, we're gonna do trash on Wednesday, Thursday of that week. So if you're normally a Tuesday, you're gonna be a Wednesday, and then Wednesday people will be on Thursday. If you put that in banner headline in the Tribune, people can't claim they didn't see it. Yeah, it's just pushed back a day, it shouldn't be anything real confusing for people. The only other thing is, today was actually Tony Schroeder's six-month anniversary for work, he started on December 19th. So I guess I'm asking, he'd be taken off probation. He's been doing fine. The last few people we've gotten have ended up finding other, better paying jobs later, so I'd kind of like to bump him up to a grade 2 at 1597. But there again, that's council's call on that.
Do you do job evaluations on them at the same time you're promoting them?
Yep.
I will make a recommendation that we promote Anthony Schroder to a grade 2 labor at 1597 an hour.
I would take, make the mayor's recommendation and put it in the form of a motion. I honor the request.
I'll second that motion.
Roll call, please.
Hedley.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Barth.
Yes.
Beverly.
Sure.
Baker.
Yes.
Bassett.
Yes.
And just one last of the, for the open street position, which, subject to what happened with trash, there might be some, some other jockeying around, but anyway, I'm gonna interview the two people that were narrowed down tomorrow, and I'll try to bring back a name for the next meeting. We'll see how either one of those works out. And as far as for Cheryl and note, if you just want to wait and start Tony effective Wednesday, since we're at the end of a pay period, it's not worth eight hours tomorrow. I don't think he'll care.
If I call often?
No, he might, I don't know. Otherwise, that's, yes, as far as I know.
Thank you. Okay, we are ready to go to the solicitor's report.
First thing I got's Resolution 2017, they actually remind a second reading by caption only, resolution of the Village of Hicksville, Ohio authorizing the mayor of the Village of Hicksville, Ohio to enter into a contract for fire and emergency medical services with Hicksville Township and declaring an emergency. Emergency being they expire at the end of the month, and I think, according to what I've been told, the townships have all, she got them all back, so they're all on board. So if we go ahead and pass this tonight, then the mayor could sign those and we'd have everything in place before the end of the month.
Don't do them individually, or...
Yeah, yeah, let's do them individually.
I move a suspend the rules.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Baker.
Yep.
Bassett.
Yes.
Beverly.
Yes.
Bassett.
Yes.
Baker.
Yep.
Resolution 2017-10, second reading by caption only, resolution of the Village of Hicksville, Ohio authorizing the mayor of the Village of Hicksville, Ohio to enter into a contract for fire and emergency medical services with Milford Township and declaring an emergency.
So move.
I second.
Roll call.
Barth.
Yes.
Hedley.
Yes.
Beverly.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Bassett.
Yes.
And just one last of the, for the open street position, which, subject to what happened with trash, there might be some, some other jockeying around, but anyway, I'm gonna interview the two people that were narrowed down tomorrow, and I'll try to bring back a name for the next meeting. We'll see how either one of those works out. And as far as for Cheryl and note, if you just want to wait and start Tony effective Wednesday, since we're at the end of a pay period, it's not worth eight hours tomorrow. I don't think he'll care.
If I call often?
No, he might, I don't know. Otherwise, that's, yes, as far as I know.
Thank you. Okay, we are ready to go to the solicitor's report.
First thing I got's Resolution 2017, they actually remind a second reading by caption only, resolution of the Village of Hicksville, Ohio authorizing the mayor of the Village of Hicksville, Ohio to enter into a contract for fire and emergency medical services with Hicksville Township and declaring an emergency. Emergency being they expire at the end of the month, and I think, according to what I've been told, the townships have all, she got them all back, so they're all on board. So if we go ahead and pass this tonight, then the mayor could sign those and we'd have everything in place before the end of the month.
Don't do them individually, or...
Yeah, yeah, let's do them individually.
I move a suspend the rules.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Baker.
Yep.
Bassett.
Yes.
Beverly.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Hedley.
Yes.
Barth.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Hedley.
Yes.
Barth.
Yes.
Third reading, Resolution 2017-09 by caption only, resolution of the Village of Hicksville, Ohio authorizing the mayor of the Village of Hicksville, Ohio to enter into a contract for fire and emergency medical services with Hicksville Township and declaring an emergency.
So move.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Barth.
Yes.
Hedley.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Beverly.
Yes.
Bassett.
Yes.
Baker.
Yep.
Resolution 2017-10, second reading by caption only, resolution of the Village of Hicksville, Ohio authorizing the mayor of the Village of Hicksville, Ohio to enter into a contract for fire and emergency medical services with Mark Township and declaring an emergency.
I would put that in the form of a motion, suspend the rules.
Roll call.
Baker.
Yes.
Bassett.
Yes.
Beverly.
Yes.
Bassett.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Thank you. We're moving on the agenda to boards and commissions. You have in your packet minutes from the June 5 beautification meeting. There's no one here to answer questions you may have. We also, then going on down to the council committee reports, we have a water sewer refuge committee meeting minutes from June 7. Do you have any, do you want to make any comments about that, Mike?
Okay, we had a good meeting. He asked us to take a look at the garbage service that we have currently in town, and of course, got two proposals. We really liked the, gee whiz, I'm at a loss.
Worler.
Worl, it works, the gentleman's last name is Worl, Casey Worl, that's the president. Worler came in with a really decent proposal. We'd like everyone in council to take a look at it with their services, recycling, their weekly pickup, and then their, they had two general pickup options. But they do have the contract in the packets, I believe, tonight, for everyone to kind of read through them for our next, maybe bring in or anybody have a discussion on it, once we can meet next time after you read the total proposal for the packets.
Just since you're on that, if you'd want to touch on the next meeting, because I was gonna have Casey come, but if there's not gonna be enough people here on the 3rd, I'd probably, we'd need to wait till the 17th to have him come for questions.
I would agree.
If everybody's okay with that, just so I know what to pass on to.
So you're gonna have him come on the 17th?
Yeah, I mean, that'd be the next one after the 3rd, so...
Okay.
You're gonna be a big shortage on the 3rd, you think? You're seeing one coming up?
I know at least two weren't gonna be here, that's why I thought I'd bring them. Three won't be here, so we might not even be meeting on the 3rd. You might need to find that out, if we're gonna be missing three.
I knew about Mike, I knew about Ron, who else?
Eric.
And Eric, okay. Well, I don't think we can really take care of any business with that many.
I'm going on vacation, too.
(laughing).
Maybe we can meet the 5th, day, next day.
I won't be back yet.
(laughing).
I'm gonna go to self-employment. Take your money, man.
Will you be back the 5th?
Yeah, I will be.
Okay. Can you make the 5th? Everybody else make the 5th Wednesday?
Okay, so do you want him to come on?
Yeah, let's have Casey, I think...
Yeah, let's get it rolling.
Like I said, what they do for other towns and with their recycling, their general pickup and their regular pickup, I think it's working for a lot of communities and it's cost-effective, so I think it'll work out nice.
I would suggest you bring these papers back with you at your next meeting, the Worler stuff. Okay, anything else?
Oh, we're still working on the meeting with the EPA in regards to meeting with Andy. I think we finally have a date set July 12. Sounds like it's gonna work us for this up there.
Yeah, possibly. Keeps getting pushed back and back and back.
But right now, that's a tentative meeting, and I know during the meeting, you know, we've been talking about the water tower and we have a Pogomire thing we need to address, but the, we're also looking for additional land for the, a well, for future expansion of our wells there at the park, and it needs to tie into our current system and everything. So we got, between the tower and the well, that's two things that we're looking at for future needs of the community. We want to stay ahead of the game and not be reactive if something happens in the future, so. Anybody have any questions?
I guess, since, since we're there, you'll see me bringing up, leave it, on the, on the Pogomire proposal, the committee asked them to resubmit, so that's why you've got stuff to look at now. And I can ask Troy to bring the legislation on the 5th unless you talk about it tonight and nobody wants to do it, period. That's sort of the plan at this point. So I give you a couple weeks to look it over.
So they're saying that $75,600 plus the $72.50 for them will take care of both, both phases, right?
Yeah, that's 70...
Except for the fact that, it tells right underneath there, it says that anything that's not in their bases is gonna be at current hourly rate scheduled. If you go back to Exhibit A, number 3, they're gonna charge you for everything. So the only thing that $75,000 is, is a place to start. They need to tie it down to a number.
Well, the contractual sign's gonna be for the 7th, and you're gonna round it off, 80, whatever that number is.
But...
Every, every engineering contract you have always has, if there's additional, you're gonna pay the hour.
I understand that, but they have everything listed as in additionals.
Now, if you go back to Exhibit C, page 5, Ron, they have the, Phase 1, they don't have broken down anything more, but Phase 2, they have all the topographical survey, design, bidding assistance, engineering during construction.
Yeah, I mean, that's what you're getting for a $75,000.
That's where, that's how they're getting the $75,600, is adding those things up.
Right.
Yeah, so that's covering the design.
Never mind, never mind. You're not following me, that's fine.
Ken, what are you hoping to find out in two weeks that you can't find out tonight?
Well, I didn't think anybody'd be ready to vote on anything tonight. I fear they'd at least want to read through the, well, yeah. I fear this, since they just got it in their packets, they can, they can wait till the 5th, I guess people...
I figured they read it before they got here and would be ready to discuss it, but if you want to give them two more weeks, go ahead.
I didn't want to assume that, and we didn't have time to look at it.
All right.
So that's why everybody's got time, we can wait two weeks.
And you're gonna have Troy bring legislation at the same time?
Yeah, might as well. I mean, that way there's discussion or whatever, then he can vote and...
And that was a plan from the committee, is to present their proposal, full-blown proposal, and then have everybody read it and then bring back legislation.
Good. All right. Anything else?
That's it.
Are there any other committees of council that has anything to report? Committee chairs? All right. We are on the administrator's report.
Before I forget, I'll let Jeff ask council something, tell me what my stuff...
In August, there's another, there's a training class that I'd like to take, prepare to take my level 3, level 3 test. Yeah, the class starts end of, in mid-August, 14-week class. So I'd like permission to apply for that. Go to that class.
Council's supposed to give their blessing before anybody goes to school.
Do we need a 3?
Bring it down.
Right now, no, but if anything comes down in the future, I'd rather have it, and that's why there's no, there's no rush, you know, with a deadline, I'd rather have it and...
I'm pretty, I'm pretty sure if we would end up with that dopey vortex, at the end of all of this, we'd become a Class 3. I'm hoping we avoid it, but I don't want to wait till the last minute either.
Yeah, that's why I don't want to wait till the last minute either, I'd rather start working on it now and...
You say it's 14 weeks?
It's 14, 14-week class.
Is it in the evenings?
Yeah, it's, well, there's a class that I'd like to take in Perry'sburg, it meets every Wednesday from 5 to 8. So hopefully I get into that one, if not, the next closest one's in Dayton, and it's from 2 to 4.
You could go to Perry'sburg.
Hopefully I get into Perry'sburg and...
Ken, is there any stipulation about passing the class or getting the license as to whether we pay for it or not? Do we pay for it regardless, just by signing it? I really don't remember that.
I got three chances. I think I got one.
Yeah, I think we, we get the three, yeah.
Then they pay for it.
Well, that's, that's a state, that's a state test, the class.
Yeah, this is against the class.
Oh.
But council still has to give them, if, I forget how the exhort, ordinance is exactly stated, council has to give their blessing to take classes.
You don't plan on leaving, are you?
(laughing).
So what's the class cost?
Well, next time I go, I'll be out to Smith Brown.
I think he said 635.
I think we should bless it.
Yes, I'll second that.
Roll call, please.
Baker.
Yes.
Bassett.
Yes.
Beverly.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Hedley.
Yes.
Barth.
Yes.
I think he's gonna take his test, or try to take his test next month. He's studying, he's still studying on that. He's done the, the classwork, classroom work, and he's just doing some study and take the test.
Did he pass his classroom work?
Yeah, he passed the classroom, so he's just getting ready to take the ABC test now.
That's a positive.
Okay. Biggest thing I want to get out to the public, because people have been calling, I've had flyers laying out here at City Hall, I think it got put on our website, but trash during the week of July 4th, with the holiday falling on a Tuesday, we're gonna do trash on Wednesday, Thursday of that week. So if you're normally a Tuesday, you're gonna be a Wednesday, and then Wednesday people will be on Thursday. So if you put that in banner headline in the Tribune, people can't claim they didn't see it. Yeah, it's just pushed back a day, it shouldn't be anything real confusing for people. The only other thing is, today was actually Tony Schroeder's six-month anniversary for work, he started on December 19th. So I guess I'm asking, he'd be taken off probation. He's been doing fine. The last few people we've gotten have ended up finding other, better paying jobs later, so I'd kind of like to bump him up to a grade 2 at 1597. But there again, that's council's call on that.
Do you do job evaluations on them at the same time you're promoting them?
Yep.
I will make a recommendation that we promote Anthony Schroder to a grade 2 labor at 1597 an hour.
I would take, make the mayor's recommendation and put it in the form of a motion. I honor the request.
I'll second that motion.
Roll call, please.
Hedley.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Barth.
Yes.
Beverly.
Yes.
Bassett.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Bassett.
Yes.
Beverly.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
And just one last of the, for the open street position, which, subject to what happened with trash, there might be some, some other jockeying around, but anyway, I'm gonna interview the two people that were narrowed down tomorrow, and I'll try to bring back a name for the next meeting. We'll see how either one of those works out. And as far as for Cheryl and note, if you just want to wait and start Tony effective Wednesday, since we're at the end of a pay period, it's not worth eight hours tomorrow. I don't think he'll care.
If I call often?
No, he might, I don't know. But otherwise, that's, yes, as far as I know.
Thank you. Okay, we are ready to go to the solicitor's report.
First thing I got's Resolution 2017, they actually remind a second reading by caption only, resolution of the Village of Hicksville, Ohio authorizing the mayor of the Village of Hicksville, Ohio to enter into a contract for fire and emergency medical services with Hicksville Township and declaring an emergency. So move.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Baker.
Yep.
Bassett.
Yes.
Beverly.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Hedley.
Yes.
Barth.
Yes.
So third reading, Resolution 2017-09 by caption only, resolution of the Village of Hicksville, Ohio authorizing the mayor of the Village of Hicksville, Ohio to enter into a contract for fire and emergency medical services with Hicksville Township and declaring an emergency.
So move.
I second.
Roll call. Baker.
Yes.
Bassett.
Yes.
Beverly.
Yes.
Barth.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Beverly.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Yep.
Third reading, Resolution 2017-11 by caption only, resolution of the Village of Hicksville,
Ohio authorizing the mayor of the Village of Hicksville, Ohio to enter into a contract for fire and emergency medical services with Milford Township and declaring an emergency.
So move. I second.
Roll call.
Barth.
Yes.
Hedley.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Beverly.
Yes.
Bassett.
Yes.
Baker.
Yep.
The only other thing that I have is, I was provided a copy today, and I don't know if other people know about it, but I was provided a copy by Cheryl, and I talked to the mayor about it today. The Village received a certified copy of an initiative petition that's filed by a group that includes John Hart, trying to get put on the ballot, basically, an ordinance that will designate 15-minute parking on portions of East High Street that are adjacent to 126 East High Street and 100 East High Street, which, if you're not familiar with the addresses, would be obviously Red Angel Pizza and 100 East High, is, Palace Pizza is my understanding. This is, what was submitted was the first step, they have to submit this to the Village, and then they have to go out and get their signatures on their petition, and then submit that to the Village, and then the clerk has to look at it and make sure she thinks it meets the technical requirements, and then there's a process, he's gotta sit in the Village office for 10 days in case anybody wants to inspect it, and then has to be forwarded to the County Board of Elections, and then they have to review a number of things, including the signatures, making sure they're proper, making sure that they got the right amount, which I understand is 10% of the number of people from the Village that voted in the last governor's election, which I kind of just did a rough, off of the Board of Elections website, it looks like about 75 signatures is what they're gonna need, there's like 745 people that voted in the Village in 2014 at the last governor's election. And then assuming that that's done, then the, you know, then it gets shot back to the clerk again, certified, and, and back to the Board of Elections, which would then go on the ballot, presuming it's done in, to the Board of Elections within 90 days, or it has to be at least 90 days before the election, then it would go on the ballot in November, and the people in the Village could vote whether or not they wanted that to be a permanent ordinance.
You know, 90 days left, isn't it?
Yeah, August, I think I calculated back, it's like August 8th or something.
August 9th.
August 9th. So they gotta go out and get their signatures, get it into Cheryl, she's gotta leave it set to 10 days, the Board of Elections back, so, and if they don't, for some reason, get it in and get it to the Board of Elections in time, it's still be valid, it'll just go on the next election instead of this current one, it's not like they lose and they gotta start all over from scratch, it goes, it just goes to the next election that's more than 90 days after they get certified. It certainly, I mean, I, I did the background on it, it's within, basically, you can do an initiative action on anything that the Village could do by legislative action, which obviously, we've taken some legislative action about the parking and the spots and stuff like that, so it's within that, it's within that realm. I guess the one concern that I have about it, and I mentioned this to Ken, is the way it's worded, if you look, and that's why they gotta provide the petition, and this isn't for Cheryl to decide, when she's deciding whether or not they meet the technical requirements, but it does say, on-street parking adjacent to the businesses located at the two addresses or whatever, so I guess there's some definitional issue in there, I don't, I guess you'd have to measure, but I assume there's more than one spot that's adjacent to 126 East High Street, probably two or three.
I, I think there's something that I should interject here, I got a phone call from the owner of Palace Pizza, and he was quite disturbed that that address was put on there. He said he did not, he did not request that to be put on there, he didn't want it on there, how does he get it off? And I think his concern was, it would have an impact on his business, and so I think that he would probably just appreciate people knowing that that was not done at his request, so...
And that's not really the Village's business, I mean, if he's got a, a beef with that, then he, you know, he's got the right to take that up or seek legal counsel or whatever, but our, from our concerns, we gotta follow the rules as far as if they get it submitted and it looks like it's proper on space, Cheryl's gotta certify it and turn it down to the Board of Elections and, and do all of that, and they'll decide whether the signatures are proper and, and everything, so...
Well, if you've got the wrong people on there, people don't want to be on there, and there's, it doesn't matter, I mean, you could, you, you could not even own a business in the downtown and have been the person in charge of, and you could've got one for, enlisted five addresses on there. You mean, they could put my name on there and I couldn't do anything about it?
I'm not saying you can't do anything about it, I'm saying we can't do anything about it, that's what I'm saying. We just gotta make sure it meets all the technical requirements, and if it does, our, our obligation under the law is to forward it on, and if it gets to the point where it's in front of the voters, then the voters will have to decide, and then, and I don't think that it does, but if there's, occasionally, people will make initiative petitions that everybody knows on their face might be, for lack of a better term, illegal or constitutionally invalid, there's even case law out there that says that, at this point in the game, we don't have the right to decide that, if it goes and gets approved by the voters and gets passed, then after the fact, somebody could challenge the constitutionality of it in court after the fact, but at this point, I think even on, there's a recent case that above the Secretary of State where he tried to, on charter amendments that, for municipalities that have charter, he tried to invalidate one of them on the grounds that he thought whatever they were asking had to do with oil and gas fracking, a bunch of cities were trying to pass laws that prevent, that were related all by the state, and he basically tried to not certify it on the grounds that he thought it was unconstitutional, and the Court of Appeals basically threw that out and said he didn't have the right to certify it. I mean, if it met the technical requirements, it had to go on the ballot, and then it passed, somebody could challenge the constitutionality of it. That's, that's just where that stands.
You have anything else?
No.
All right.
Do we have our two mills in the election board yet? Do you know?
Oh, that's been in.
Oh, it is? No, I didn't think so.
You didn't file the paperwork?
Certified has not been filed with the Board of Elections because you guys were having your meeting last Monday.
Okay.
To find out if it was gonna get rescinded or not.
All right.
It's ready.
We will go on to the department heads. Chief Stickney.
I don't have anything for the council tonight.
Okay. All right. Does anyone have any questions for the police chief? All right. How about Chief Kramer?
I don't have anything tonight.
Okay. Chief Kessler?
Everybody in council should've got their little statistics. I just wanted to let you guys know, the ad has been placed in the paper, it was in the New Tribune, it's also in the Crescent, and as far as I know, we've received three applicants at this time.
Nice report.
Yes, very good.
The details were great.
Yeah.
Does anyone have any questions for her? Read a garden report or anything else? Okay. Anyone from the park here? Don't see anyone. We'll go on to the fiscal officers' report.
I have the two things that are listed, the cash report...
Do you do job evaluations on them at the same time you're promoting them? I will make a recommendation that we promote Anthony Schroeder to a Grade II labor at $15.97 an hour.
I would take, make the mayor's recommendation and put it in the form of a motion. We honor the request. I'll second that motion.
Roll call please.
Hedley.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Barth.
Yes.
Beverly.
Sure.
Baker.
Yes.
Bassett.
Yes.
And just one last update for the open street position, which, subject to what happened with trash, there might be some other jockeying around, but anyway, I'm going to interview the two people that were narrowed down tomorrow, and I'll try to bring back a name for the next meeting. We'll see how either one of those works out. And as far as for Cheryl, note, if you just want to wait and start Tony effective Wednesday, since we're at the end of a pay period, it's not worth eight hours tomorrow. I don't think he'll care.
He'll probably call often.
He might. I don't know. But otherwise, that's as far as I know.
Thank you. Okay, we are ready to go to the solicitor's report.
The first thing I got is Resolution 2017 dash zero nine, a second reading by caption only, "Resolution of the Village of Hicksville, Ohio Authorizing the Mayor of the Village of Hicksville, Ohio to Enter Into a Contract for Fire and Emergency Medical Services with Hicksville Township and Declaring an Emergency." Emergency being they expire at the end of the month, and I think, according to what I've been told, the townships have all, she got them all back, so they're all on board. So if we go ahead and pass this tonight, then the mayor could sign those, and we'd have everything in place before the end of the month.
So do them individually or?
Yeah, yeah, let's do them individually.
I move to suspend the rules.
I'll second.
Roll call please.
Baker.
Yep.
Bassett.
Yes.
Beverly.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Hedley.
Yes.
Barth.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Beverly.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Baker.
Yep.
Resolution 2017 dash 10, second reading by caption only, "Resolution of the Village of Hicksville, Ohio Authorizing the Mayor of the Village of Hicksville, Ohio to Enter Into a Contract for Fire and Emergency Medical Services with Mark Township and Declaring an Emergency."
So move.
Second.
Roll call please.
Barth.
Yes.
Hedley.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Beverly.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Barth.
Yes.
Hedley.
Yes.
Third reading of Resolution 2017 dash 10 by caption only, "Resolution of the Village of Hicksville, Ohio Authorizing the Mayor of the Village of Hicksville, Ohio to Enter Into a Contract for Fire and Emergency Medical Services with Mark Township and Declaring an Emergency."
So move.
I second.
Roll call.
Barth.
Yes.
Hedley.
Yes.
Beverly.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Bassett.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
And Resolution 2017 dash 11, second reading by caption only, "Resolution of the Village of Hicksville, Ohio Authorizing the Mayor of the Village of Hicksville, Ohio to Enter Into a Contract for Fire and Emergency Medical Services with Milford Township and Declaring an Emergency."
So move.
Second.
Roll call.
Baker.
Yes.
Bassett.
Yes.
Beverly.
Yes.
Barth.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Hedley.
Yes.
Third reading of Resolution 2017 dash 11 by caption only, "Resolution of the Village of Hicksville, Ohio Authorizing the Mayor of the Village of Hicksville, Ohio to Enter Into a Contract for Fire and Emergency Medical Services with Milford Township and Declaring an Emergency."
So move.
Second.
Roll call.
Barth.
Yes.
Hedley.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Beverly.
Yes.
Bassett.
Yes.
Baker.
Yep.
The only other thing that I have is I was provided a copy today, and I don't know if other people know about it, but I was provided a copy by Cheryl, and I talked to the mayor about it today. The village received a certified copy of an initiative petition that's filed by a group that includes John Hart, trying to get put on the ballot, basically, an ordinance that will designate 15-minute parking on portions of East High Street that are adjacent to 120-60 East High Street and 100 East High Street, which, if you're not familiar with the addresses, would be, obviously, Red Angel Pizza and 100 East High, Palace Pizza, is my understanding. This is what was submitted was the first step. They have to submit this to the village, and then they have to go out and get their signatures on their petition, and then submit that to the village, and then the clerk has to look at it and make sure she thinks it meets the technical requirements, and then there's a process. It's got to sit in the village office for 10 days in case anybody wants to inspect it, and then has to be forwarded to the county board of elections, and then they have to review a number of things, including the signatures, making sure they're proper, making sure that they got the right amount, which I understand is 10% of the number of people from the village that voted in the last governor's election, which I kind of just did a rough off of the Board of Elections website. It looks like about 75 signatures is what they're going to need. There's like 745 people that voted in the village in 2014 at the last governor's election. And then, assuming that that's done, then, you know, then it gets shot back to the clerk again, certified, and back to the Board of Elections, which would then go on the ballot, presuming it's done in, to the Board of Elections within 90 days, or it has to be at least 90 days before the election, then it would go on the ballot in November, and the people in the village could vote whether or not they wanted that to be a permanent ordinance.
Not 90 days left, is it?
Yeah, August, I think I calculated back, it's like August 8th or something.
August 9th.
August 9th. So they got to go out and get their signatures, get it into Cheryl, she's got to leave it set to 10 days, the Board of Elections back, so, and if they don't, for some reason, get it in and get it to the Board of Elections in time, it still will be valid, it'll just go on the next election instead of this current one. It's not like they lose and they got to start all over from scratch. It goes, it just goes to the next election that's more than 90 days after they get certified. It's certainly, I mean, I did the background on it, it's within, basically, you can do an initiative action on anything that the village could do by legislative action, which obviously, we've taken some legislative action about the parking and the spots and stuff like that, so it's within that, it's within that realm. I guess the one concern that I have about it, and I mentioned this to Ken, is the way it's worded, if you look, and that's why they got to provide the petition, and this isn't for Cheryl to decide when she's deciding whether or not they meet the technical requirements, but it does say, "On-street parking adjacent to the businesses located at the two addresses" or whatever, so I guess there's some definitional issues in there. I don't, I guess you'd have to measure, but I assume there's more than one spot that's adjacent to 120-60 East High Street, probably two or three.
I think there's something that I should interject here. I got a phone call from the owner of Palace Pizza, and he was quite disturbed that that address was put on there. He said he did not, he did not request that to be put on there. He didn't want it on there, how does he get it off? And I think his concern was it would have an impact on his business. And so I think that he would probably just appreciate people knowing that that was not done at his request, so.
And that's not really the village's business. I mean, if he's got a beef with that, then, you know, he's got the right to take that up or seek legal counsel or whatever, but our, from our concerns, we got to follow the rules as far as if they get it submitted and it looks like it's proper on space, Cheryl's got to certify it and turn it down to the Board of Elections and do all of that, and they'll decide whether the signatures are proper and everything, so.
Well, if you've got the wrong people on there, people don't want to be on there, and it's, it doesn't matter.
I mean, you could, you could not even own a business in the downtown and have been the person in charge of, and you could have got one for, enlisted five addresses.
You mean, they could put my name on there and I couldn't do anything about it?
I'm not saying you can't do anything about it, I'm saying we can't do anything about it. That's what I'm saying. We just got to make sure it meets all the technical requirements, and if it does, our obligation under the law is to forward it on, and if it gets to the point where it's in front of the voters, then the voters will have to decide. And then, and I don't think that it does, but if there's, occasionally, people will make initiative petitions that everybody knows on their face might be, for lack of a better term, illegal or constitutionally invalid. There's even case law out there that says that, at this point in the game, we don't have the right to decide that. If it goes and gets approved by the voters and gets passed, then after the fact, somebody could challenge the constitutionality of it in court after the fact, but at this point, I think even on, there's a recent case that involves the secretary of state where he tried to, on charter amendments that, for municipalities that have charter, he tried to invalidate one of them on the grounds that he thought whatever they were asking had to do with oil and gas fracking. A bunch of cities were trying to pass laws that prevent the events related all by the state, and he basically tried to not certify it on the grounds that he thought it was unconstitutional, and the Court of Appeals basically threw that out and said he didn't have the right to certify it. And if it met the technical requirements, it had to go on the ballot, and then it passed, somebody could challenge the constitutionality of it. That's, that's just where that's at.
Do you have anything else?
No.
All right.
Do we have our two mills in the election board yet? Do you know?
Oh, that's been in.
Oh, it is? No, I didn't think so.
You didn't file the paperwork?
Certified has not been filed with the Board of Elections because you guys were having your meeting last Monday.
Okay.
To find out if it was going to get rescinded or not.
All right.
It's ready.
We will go on to the department heads. Chief Stickney.
I don't have anything for the council tonight.
Okay.
Question?
All right. Does anyone have any questions for the police chief? All right. How about Chief Kramer?
I don't have anything tonight.
Okay. Chief Kessler?
Everybody in council should have got their little statistics. I just wanted to let you guys know, the ad has been placed in the paper, it was in the News Tribune, it's also in the Crescent, and as far as I know, we've received three applicants at this time.
Was it a nice report?
Yes, very good.
The details were great.
Yeah.
Does anyone have any questions for her regarding the report or anything else? Anyone from the park here? Don't see anyone. Okay. We'll go on to the fiscal officer's report.
I have the two things that are listed, the cash report and the media com franchise fee report, and I also put in two papers on the desk tonight. One is from the fraud training that I was at last week, and also from the treasure from one of our classes that was telling us about the OPCS, Ohio pooled collateral system that is going into effect for the entire state of Ohio on July 1st. And so if you have any questions about that, you can ask me.
Anyone having questions for Cheryl?
So someone in the finance committee needs to look at it.
You need to be aware of it. We don't have a choice. Banks don't either.
Collateral, that, we used to have collateral institutions that come back there.
Because it's a certain percentage, we have to, they have to do it up to 102%.
Wow.
They can ask to lower it, and the state has to give them permission to lower it, and then if they do lower it, we don't have to accept it as a village. We can tell them however much we want to be collateralized for, and they have to do it.
Will this be more promulgated, financed, and more collateral?
Oh, it's, no, it's not like that. Not that kind of stuff.
Okay. Got you. Okay. There's nothing else from me. Cheryl, I guess we'll go on to the mayor's report. I was at Dublin last week at the mayor's conference. We discussed such issues as revitalization in Ohio's small and medium-sized legacy cities, Ohio Department of Transportation local funding programs. Spent a lot of time talking about bridges and stuff. Roundtable discussions for different topics such as praying during meetings, manhandling, nuisance animals and properties, golf carts, fireworks, alley parcels. A lot of different topics came up. I wrote them down, but I don't remember all of them. Then the Ohio Department of Veterans Affairs talked about services that they offer. We talked about economic development dealmaking, AT&amp;T telecommunications. That looks like that it was pretty interesting. So I asked Mike Bart to find out if, Cam brought it to my attention, that the farmer's market was going to have to be moved to a different location during the sewer construction on South Main Street, so, in trying to think of a place to move the farmer's market to from in front of the municipal building, I asked Mike to contact the First Church of Christ to see if they would allow us to use the old high school lot on North Main Street, thinking that it would be an excellent place for, with the parking and the setting up of the vendors and everything. Our farmer's market has gotten off to a really slow start because of the weather and stuff that we've had for the crops, and some people have even had to replant their gardens, but there are a couple vendors that are coming, and hopefully, the vendors with the produce and strawberries and stuff will start coming soon. But just be aware that the market will have to move sooner or later this summer. And then, you all got a copy of an email that was sent to me regarding the Huber Opera House and how, there was a such suggestion made of how the village could help them with their expenses and operations, I guess. Did you all get it, first of all? So you know what I'm talking about? Okay.
Is that legal?
It's probably legal, depending on how it's set up or whatever. There is probably a way to do it where, I mean, like anything else, you got to ask yourself how much the village wants to, you know, who's going to come with their handout, what other nonprofit organizations and stuff like that, but there probably is a, I mean, I looked at it preliminarily to look and see, and there is a way.
One thought that occurred to me is that, you know, we have our revolving loan funds that we have used for grants and loans, and I think that would fall under the purpose of the revolving loan funds.
Yeah, I'd have to look at it.
Yeah, so.
Mayor, I interject. I would like to have a committee meeting, but to meet, maybe meet with the Chamber and the Huber and these organizations that are in need of finance and just kind of see where they're coming from. We have no idea what their, when I say, I'm not saying that we're in favor of it or anything, but we have no idea what kind of operational expenses that they accumulate over the course of year.
Okay.
And a lot of them have dues and memberships and, you know, event fees, and everybody has fixed costs, but.
So I assume that you want the Street Light and Property Committee to take care of that, so we will send that to the committee, and you guys can meet with them, and then just report back to council, okay?
Kind of get a feel for what they're asking for, and, I mean, I know an individual asked about it, but, you know, maybe with their presidents and.
At one time, I had met with a couple different individuals involved with it, and they asked if the village would consider, you know, taking it over and running it, and I spoke to some of you about it, and I just kind of explained that we're not experienced in trying to find venues for an opera house, and I just didn't think that it was possible for us to run something like that, you know? But I would gladly give it to your committee to meet with them and discuss it and see what you propose.
Yeah. Ron, I am.
Okay. And let's see here. You probably read in the paper, and I have been told by Jerry Hayes, that the community reinvestment area still needs to be, go forward in Hicksville if we want to do that, so I guess we, Jerry Hayes suggested that we get a committee together, people from different sectors of the community to discuss the community reinvestment area. So I guess I would ask council as a whole, do you know for sure you want to go forward with the community reinvestment area? Has that been decided? So, does, you know, how do you want to proceed from here? Do you want to have me get a committee together to proceed with it, or do you, do you want a committee of council to decide if we want to form a community reinvestment area?
Were we approved?
You never, you got to do all this work and then apply to get approved. I mean, they had to do that study or whatever, and I presume is that all done? I know the last time I talked to Jerry about it, he told me basically the entire community would qualify and could make, just like you talked about in Findlay, they have the whole city that's in it, so really, the point of the committee, if we're going to go forward, would be trying to decide on the things that there are some variables on, like commercial and industrial. You can set, like, limits of length of time up to a certain amount of time, and percentage of taxes, and there's all types of decisions like that to be made. And it's not that the committee would make those, but maybe they could give some recommendations as to, you know, certainly a big player in that discussion would be somebody from the school.
Absolutely.
Well, I like you and Bob, and also, I would like you and Bob.
But they're going to be involved, and obviously, the school's the one that's going to have the potential loss of some, loss of some revenue, or delayed revenue, so. And then, once you get that all decided, you pass your ordinance and do whatever, and then it gets certified down to the state to see, you know, they look at it, make sure everything qualifies, and if it gets approved, from that point forward, then people can start making applications for, that they want to do this work, or, you know, improvements or new construction that falls under the program and get approved for the program and go from there.
Sherwood already has that in place, right?
They do. Defiance has three of them, I think, in place at different parts or whatever, I mean, just from a economic development and an improvement of the villages. Having the program seems like a no-brainer. The question is, what type of incentive, you know, how far do you want to go with the incentives, a period of time, percentages and things like that, but, I mean, there's, off the top of my head, there's no downside to the village to have it, and people can take advantage of it or not take advantage of it if it's there, and.
Do you think it would be beneficial?
My thought, my thought would be getting a subcommittee, get somebody from the school, somebody from the industry, maybe retail, because it impacts everybody in residential, you know, to fix up a house and put money in remodeling and buildings and expansions.
I think that, myself, I think that the way it would benefit us best is to entice business and industry to Hicksville.
For instance, when we've had vacant factories and things like that, that may be needed and some upgrades and stuff like that, it gives them one more piece of the pie, where you can say, hey, we're coming in and we're planning on putting $2 million into this, you know, factory to get it up to our specifications, and assuming it meets terms of the plan, then they can, you know, have incentive to do that and keep their tax base based upon what the current valuation is for a period of time or a certain percentage of it, so that they avoid paying the increased real estate taxes on those improvements. It's not going to probably be the main reason that somebody comes, but you know how that is when we've had people interested, they want to know what's available in a revolving loan, what's the county got, what's the.
We just had an industry ask about that.
Yeah.
Plus, the school board has to vote on this too. They have to accept this. That's why as they can.
Yeah. That's why I said they may be the ones that, I can't speak for them, obviously, but they may be the ones that are like, well, we're okay as long as it's this number of years, but we don't want it to go clear out to the max, and off the top of my head, I can't remember what the max is.
10, isn't it?
10. Yeah, that's right. It's different, I know, on industrial and commercial than it is on residential. It's longer on the industrial stuff, but 10, yeah, that sounds accurate.
So, we could put a committee together for this, and if any of you would like to be on this committee, please let me know, and I'll add your name to a list. We'll get our committee group together. Troy definitely like you on it.
That's fine.
And I'll, and we'll get our committee put together and get set up and get ready to go for when Jerry's ready for us. So, just get ahold of me if anybody, any of you want to serve on it. Before I came to the council meeting tonight, I was watching a little news, and it said that a child drowned in Fort Wayne in a swimming pool. I'd just like to remind residents that our village ordinance says you're supposed to have a six-foot fence around your swimming pool, or you're supposed to have it secured with a locked gate or something or other. So I'd just remind people that if you have a pool in your neighborhood or a pool of your own, please be diligent about keeping everyone safe from an accident like that. The village players had a wonderful play this weekend, and it's next weekend too, Death by Taxes. It was, it was really cute. It was pretty funny, in case anybody doesn't know what to do next weekend, they have a dinner theater, if you, dinner also, Mexican dinner in advance. If you make the call and make your reservation, you can have dinner beforehand too, which was a really good dinner. The last thing I have is I would like to go into executive session, which I can't do. One of you, one of the council members has to do, and it concerns a real estate, possible real estate acquisition. I'm trying to think if there's any other purposes that we needed to go in for before that, that was the one I needed to discuss tonight.
We're going to replace the social.
Not that I'm aware of.
We're just getting broken.
Yeah.
I think a much recommended executive session discuss possible land acquisition.
I want, real quick though, before that, Ron, I wanted to thank everybody, Night of Lights was this last weekend, all the volunteers and the people that put the time into that new community event. They had a lot of participants with the booths and people that walked, and just a lot of luminaries, and I think the, Ron, when I saw Ron out there, but a lot of memorializing people that have lost their lives or had done something special with people, but it was a nice event, and the different people that helped sponsor it, put it on, I did a good job. So I think they're going to do it again next year, bigger and better and some different things, so, like I said, nice community event, and thank you very much.
Thanks for bringing that up, Mike, it was very nice. Do any of you have anything that you would like to step up to the podium and talk about? Taking a risk here, I know. All righty.
Bob, you have anything?
Yeah. I'll second, Ron.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to go into executive session for possible real estate acquisition. Roll call please.
Baker.
Yes.
Bassett.
Yes.
Beverly.
Sure.
Barth.
Yes.
Hedley.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Thank you, everyone, for coming.